Good afternoon, everyone. Could I please remind everyone, if you have a mobile phone, to please switch it off. Two items of sad business to announce, and that is the deaths of former councillors, Peter Dunlop and Linda Russell. Peter represented Greenwich Town Ward and was a member of the council from 2003 to 2015. Linda represented Longbech Ward and was a member of the council from 1983 to 1995. Our thoughts are with their families and friends. Thank you. Would you please remain standing for...
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we remember before you Peter and Linda, who in their generation gave admirable service to our community and borough, and who now you have promoted more. We give thanks for all that they achieved and for their public service, and we pray earnestly that they may now rest in peace and rise in law, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Almighty God, the Maker and the Ruler of all things, we hope you receive you to bless and prosper the people of our borough of Redcar and Breeville. strengthen our commerce, sustain our industry, nourish our agriculture, strengthen and sustain our communities, bless the work of our charities, uphold and support our children, and prosper our places of learning. That this borough may be a place where all generations may truly flourish. We ask this through Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen. Thy majesty the Queen, all ministers of the Crown, the mayor, councillors, executives and officers of this borough, that in the power of your holy spirit, all those whom you have called to public service may be blessed with wisdom and right judgment in all things. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. May the peace of God which passes on understanding keep your hearts and minds in the knowledge and love of God and of his son Jesus Christ our Lord, and may the blessing of God almighty, the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit be upon you and upon your councils this day and forth. Amen.
Thank you. Please proceed. Before we start our business, is there anyone that would like to pay tribute to ex-councillor Peter Dunlop or Linda Russell?
Sorry, councillor Jeffrey.
I'm speaking about Peter Dunlop, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, that was dropped on me short notice, but I'm very, very pleased to actually say a few words about Peter. I know less about Peter as a councillor than I do about a man and a drinking comrade, if you understand the distinction there. I had a very long and happy relationship with Peter, sorting out many issues and problems, sat most of the time at the Labour Club on Fabian Road in Eston. The way he used to do that, particularly after group meetings. And Peter, you know, was a font of knowledge in a lot of respects. He had a lot of background and history in terms of the local industry, he had his engineering qualifications, he had a family that was spread out all over the place, and he liked to talk about the way things had been and what he saw as things that should be happening for good in the future. I don't think I ever heard Peter have a bad word about anyone. He would just sit and talk and just revel in the fact that he was enjoying his life and getting on with his job. He really enjoyed being a councillor, and certainly when it's had an impact or a positive effect on his constituents, that's what pleased him most. He was very heavily involved in adoption and fostering service activities, and he always used to tell me how big the files were, and I think Craig would probably agree with that, but he waded through every single page of those things to make sure he actually understood what he was doing. And when you consider the number of reports we're getting, perhaps if we're honest, sometimes we don't always read them thoroughly, well, he always did that. So I was pleased, if that's the right expression to use, to go to his last ceremony. It was very pleasant, and it was a good reminder of the good things he'd done and he'd been. So I'm pleased to be able to make this contribution chair.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Robins, please.
Thank you. I came right... Sorry. I knew Peter over a number of years since I joined the council, and the good thing about him was, he was ever the gentleman, the old-fashioned gentleman, and he had a passionate interest in young people and served on governing bodies into, you know, just shortly before he left council and possibly beyond, I don't know about that. I'll just echo what Ian said, he was passionate about his history, and it was a real privilege to have known Peter.
Thank you.
Can we go on to the first item of business, which apologies for absence. Apologies have been received from councillors Mrs Cooney, Thompson, Frewer and Dr C Jackson. Are there any other apologies, please?
Councillor Debbie Dawson, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Kerry Corley, Brenda Foster.
Liz Pallister.
And Lynne Pallister, although I think she's coming. She's running late, she will be here, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Item two, declarations of interest, the green forms are going around for members to sign. Item three is to confirm the accuracy of the minutes of our last meeting held on the 5th of July. Could I have a proposal, please?
Yeah, I'm happy to move those minutes, Mr Mayor.
Second minute, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Massey. All those in favour, please? Okay, thank you very much. Item four is to receive announcements from the mayor, leader and cabinet members. Can I, first of all, just being people up to date, I was unable to go ahead with the sponsored Slim, which I was going to set off on the 10th of September, having spent a little while in hospital, I'd lost over a stone, so we've postponed that until after Christmas, when we thought people might then put on a bit more weight and wish to join us. I will be starting, and there will be some things going out very shortly to advertise this, it's what we call Smarty Challenge. And what it is, Jane Holmes has in the office 100 tubes of Smarties full. The idea is that anyone that wants to take part, they will call in, see Jane, collect a full tube of Smarties, she will record names, departments and date, take the Smarties away, enjoy eating them. The catch is that each Smarty Tube, once you've finished it, holds about 12 pounds worth of 20p's. If they can be filled over the course of the next six months, brought back into Jane, can then have another tube of Smarties free of charge, and the person who raises the most money over that six months will receive a small prize. All monies raised will go to the two charities that I am supporting. So if you like Smarties, please see Jane, get a tube and then fill them up with 20p's. They do hold pound coins, but I'm not going to ask people to put pound coins in. I've been given a request from councillor Lanigan about the Little Princess Trust. She has left a sponsor form in the foyer. There's an eight-year-old little girl who is donating her hair for wig support, and I think this is for people who have lost their hair through cancer, and the Little Princess Trust take hair that is removed from people who have plenty of it and then make it into wigs. So if anyone wants to sponsor that, there is a sponsor form in the foyer. Can I ask the leader if she has any announcements, please?
I do, indeed. Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a few things to say today. First of all, I know you've been a bit poorly over the summer, haven't you, and it's really good to see you back, and I'm glad you're feeling better again, so welcome back. Couple of things from me. First of all, SSI, people will be aware that we are just at the 3rd anniversary of the closure of the SSI steel plant, and we had a task group meeting a couple of weeks ago just to look at where the fund had got to, and how much money had been spent, and how it had been spent, and what the outputs were, and I thought I'd just give you a quick update on that. The total fund, although it was 80 million, it was only 53 million that we had locally to spend, so we had a 53 million pound fund, of which just over 49 million pounds has been committed, and that money has been spent on creating over 2,000 jobs, 2007, safeguarding another 422, starting up 336 businesses, ensuring 46 apprenticeships completed their courses, and delivering 17,000 training courses. So you can see that over the three years of the fund, there's been significant amounts of work carried out. Because that work has now, in some instances come to a close, some of the funds have now been closed or about to close, so the flexible fund and the jobs and skills fund and the apprenticeship fund are now closed, along with the safety net fund and the extra money going to colleges, but some are continuing, so the Business Advice and Start-up Fund and the capital grant and small grant scheme are being kept going, so some of the ones that are ensuring that we can continue to support businesses and keep investing in our new entrepreneurs are continuing to happen, so that's really positive news. And also, of course, for those SSI workers who are still working on the site, employed through the South East Site Company, there is a trust being set up for them with some of the remaining money to ensure that they can still get what they're entitled to out of that fund going forward. So I think that's good news. The task force continues, will continue, but obviously it's meeting much less often than it was, and we're very hopeful that progress will continue in those funds that I've talked about. Just in terms of SSI closure, I mean, you know, the concept that that is the end of steel, or the steel industry on the Tees Valley, I think was put to bed quite well a couple of weeks ago, when we got the announcement that an organisation or a company called Liberty Powders was going to be starting a 10 million pound scheme, innovation scheme, based at the Materials Processing Institute in South Bank, that's going to look at new ways of using metals to, would you believe, 3D print, car parts and the like going forward, and this is the future of the metals industry that we're now investing in and innovating around. So I'm really pleased that at a time three years on, when we're talking about, you know, the closure of SSI and traditional steelmaking, that we're also seeing significant investment in a new product and a new way of using metal that hopefully will take us into the next century and beyond and create good quality jobs with it. Just a couple of other things to update you on. Obviously, we just had the Festival of Thrift, went excellently again, and the weather stayed good, which is always excellent, isn't it? We, I was really pleased to go down to Leeds the other week there and be there for the announcement of the Tour de Yorkshire venues for 2019, and in our instance, 2020, and we can confirm that we do have a leg of the Tour de Yorkshire for 2020, which is absolutely excellent, and, you know, I've no doubt that the hard work that was done through the Klondike and the efforts that were put in there has built our reputation and made it more likely that we got that, so, you know, well done to everybody who's been involved in that, and I'm absolutely sure that we will use the next 18 months to make the very best of the Tour de Yorkshire. I think I mentioned, or I might not have done, because it's a while since we met, isn't it, last time round, that we do have this issue about business rates, where the government is demanding two and a bit million pounds of business rates from us, despite the fact that we never ever collected it. We have been trying to get hold of the minister, James Brokenshire, to go and talk to him about whether or not we should be giving back money we've never had, and I'm pleased to say that we have now got a date for that meeting in the diary, and I'll obviously report back to you next time what the outcome of that meeting is. And then finally, just on a very happy note, did anybody notice the happiness index that was published the other day there? Well, if you didn't see it, you should have looked at it, because the happiness index showed that Redcar and Cleveland is the happiest place, not just in the Tees Valley, but in the whole of the North East, so you should all be very proud. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Are there any announcements from cabinet members? Next item is to receive announcements from the chief executive. Mr Mayor?
I've put my light on to speak.
Please, sorry, councillor Jeffrey.
Okay. I've just got a couple of things myself. I just wanted to echo what our leader had said about the Tour de Yorkshire, excellent news for this area, not just a phase, but we're actually hosting this as well, so it's going to be massive for our economy. And I'd like to thank the former director of Economic Growth for his work and the team around us, that's brought this to us, so it's really exciting, and I'm sure everybody in here will be excited about that coming to our borough. Secondly, I would like to give my congratulations to all those recognised for their efforts at the Pride Awards. I have to, I've picked out three specifically within my portfolio, but I would like to extend my sincere congratulations to everyone. Firstly, congratulations and my appreciation to employer of the year Anthony Tyman for his work in producing our new corporate website and the development of our social media. His hard work and dedication over a period of months ensured an important and complex project was delivered to the highest of standards. He worked closely with his colleagues in IT and dealt with the contrasting wishes of the directorates. Anthony should be rightly proud of his achievement. Congratulations also to Gail Bradbury, whose cutting-edge design work was rewarded with the Innovation Award. Gail has provided outstanding designs for numerous projects which display us as a forward-thinking, innovative council. And also my congratulations to the Business Growth Team, who won the Partnership Award. Very well done, Paul Healy and the team, who excel year on year. You always work hard to assist our business communities and make a real difference to the lives of young people, and your efforts are very much appreciated. As I say, congratulations to all those recognised at the Pride Awards and to all those unsung heroes behind the scenes who do so much to keep us functioning under so much pressure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Courteween, and my apologies for not seeing your light. Come on. Item five, to receive announcements from the chief executive.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to invite members to congratulate Patrick Rice, who's just been appointed as our new corporate director for adult and communities. Well done, Patrick, and good luck.
Item six is questions from the public, and we have no questions that have been received. Go on to item seven, to consider an agreed reports from cabinet. Councillor Hanaway.
All right, yeah. It's the looked after children one first, isn't it, Mr Mayor?
Sorry?
The looked after children one first.
Looked after children, please, yes.
Thank you. So this is the Looked After Children report. At the moment, or rather at the end of August, we had 285 looked after children, again a very, historically very high figure for us, although I believe over the summer it has actually been higher. In relation to where the looked after children are at the moment, 213 are in foster care, 127 within house foster carers, and 78 with independent or voluntary providers. Fifteen are subject to a care order and placed at home, nine in independent living, and seven in their adoptive placement waiting to be adopted, and there are 37 children in residential settings and foreign other placements. The fostering recruitment campaign continues to gain pace. It's gone very well over the summer months, we had a two-page feature in the This is Redcar and Cleveland community magazine, and this promoted two case studies, one featuring our current foster carer, Peter Brentano, and the other featuring our former mayor, Karen King, and also a young person who'd previously been looked after, and this was to raise awareness with residents in the borough. Recruitment campaign has been shortlisted for an award in the Chartered Institute of Public Relations. It's been shortlisted for the best low-budget campaign award for 2018. We've recruited two new supervising social workers for the fostering team. It's a varied role, it includes the recruitment, training, assessment and support for potential and approved foster carers. They also identify and match foster placements. Our Foskers event, which is an Oscars-style event for our foster carers, was held on the 19th of July and was well-attended. This celebrates the good work that the foster carers are doing in Redcar and Cleveland. Isabel and Neil Stevenson won Foster Carers of the Year award for their dedication and flexibility. And the Looked After Children's team, looked after children who have left school this year, have taken their exams and moved on to education or training or other things, and their personal advisers and carers have worked hard to ensure that they're supported during this transition. We've also recruited to the post of unaccompanied asylum seeker children's social worker. This was made possible by some government funding aimed at the resettlement of our unaccompanied asylum-seeking children into local authorities. This social worker will be based in the leaving care team and will work closely with the personal advisers. The biggest challenge currently for the Looked After Children's service is the lack of and high cost of residential placements for adolescents with emotional and behaviour difficulties. The cost of these residential placements in the last year alone has been 4.8 million. Sir James Munby, who until the end of July was the head of family justice in England and Wales, described this shortage of specialist placements as nothing short of a national scandal, and has referred this problem to government, and in particular to the DFE, as a matter of urgency. In our virtual school, 50 of the 471 PEPs completed this year have been converted from inadequate into satisfactory or good through the work of our virtual school head and his team. He has also reduced the number of looked after children whose school place was at risk from 20 to 6, and has made sure there are plans for those six. The virtual school has maintained a record of no looked after children being subject to a permanent exclusion from school. The virtual school is currently involved in two regional research projects with an aim to share good and outstanding practice across schools in Redcar and Cleveland to further support the education of our looked after children. Our leaving care service is currently working with 129 young people, 52 in care aged 16 to 17, and 77 who have left care. We continue to make progress in achieving better outcomes for care leavers in key areas such as health, education, employment and training. We're actively involved in groups such as the Regional Leaving Care Forum, the Accommodation Forum and the North East Children in Care Council to promote and share good practice. We've met with colleagues from other leaving care teams regarding the rollout and coordination of the universal credit scheme and the impact we fear this is likely to have for some of our care leavers, and we've given them advice and guidance. Also, we have, in terms of providing employment opportunities for care leavers, we have decided to guarantee an interview to our looked after children and care leavers who apply for our own in-house apprenticeships, and it's been agreed that 10% of all in-house apprenticeships per year would be ring-fenced for our looked after children and care leavers, and Osted commented that this was very good practice. One care leaver has successfully completed her first year of a social work degree, and another is due to start university studying law, and three young people have secured apprenticeships within the local authority. Our new contact centre, the Beach House, was officially opened on the 16th of July and has been well-received by looked after children, by their families and by foster carers, and thanks to all those members who attended the launch. The Children and Family Therapist Service have also now joined the resources team. They consist of a senior children and family therapist and a play therapist, and they have relocated to the Beach House, where they'll have access to a therapy room to undertake direct work with the children. Our Looked After Children's Council continue their good work, recently members of the Corporate Parenting Board, senior managers and young people from our Looked After Children's Council came together and tuned in for an annual meeting. The theme of it was engagement and participation, and we worked together on a variety of activities. The session was very well received by the young people, who said it had been their favourite session of the year, and the meeting closed with a commitment from the council to explore further how they as a group could ensure they did more to capture the views and opinions of all of Redcars and Cleveland's looked after children and care leavers. Moving on to the subject of child sexual exploitation, at the 31st of August 2018, there were 25 children and young people who were working with the VEMT practitioner group. It's the slight reduction on the previous month, and the age range is between 12 and 18 years old. As previously reported, digital safety continues to be a predominant risk factor in relation to posting photographs or images on social media sites. Nationally, the police have recorded 64,667 child sex offences last year, and there are a number of emerging themes in relation to criminal exploitation such as county lines and association with gangs. We spoke training to improve the quality of our return home interviews, which delivered to a number of social workers and early health practitioners over the summer. As ever, it's important for us to raise awareness as a preventative measure, and to support this targeted youth support, have delivered a number of awareness sessions exploring the dangers of online grooming to 35 pupils who attend Right Hill School, and we have also done Keeping Safe road shows in two secondary schools. It's very important that we raise CSE to this vulnerable age group, and also to those starting college. So a representative from Bernardo's with ourselves attended the precious fair at Prior Persco College in September 2018, and this attracted approximately 300 students. Time was spent with the students discussing different scenarios of how young people can be exploited, groomed and trafficked. There are only now seven taxi drivers who are trying to avoid our CSE awareness. There are only now seven taxi drivers who are trying to avoid our CSE awareness course, but there is no escape. Resistance is useless, and those remaining seven have been suspended until they complete the course. And finally, could I say congratulations to councillor Jones on being approved as one of our foster carers, and I hope he finds the role very fulfilling. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanaway. Could I have a second for that report, please? councillor Evans, please.
Thank you. I was just to say thank you for a comprehensive report again, and congratulations to everyone who was involved in this challenging area of work in times of increasing numbers and financial implications. These are our most vulnerable children that we're talking about. And going on from that, you have referred to the seven licensed taxi drivers, and I'm really pleased that that's been something that's been driven forward, that's protecting all of our young people. And no doubt that a suspension and inability to do their job might spur them into taking this, and the only hope is that when they do go online, that they take it all to heart and treat this matter seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Evans. councillor Lannigan, please.
Thank you, councillor Hanaway, for your report. Excellent as normal. What I wanted to ask you about, I'm quite sure that the majority of borough councillors, when that press release went out about the massive funding deficit that we've got within children's services, I've actually had a look through, and although we have missed some council meetings here, my recollection is that when we set a budget, that the budget that was set to go forward in March, April this year, that there was no suggestion that we were going to run into these difficulties. We are aware that we do have vulnerable children, but this seems to be a substantial amount of money. I've looked at the number of children, and although it has increased, I can't correlate between what the number of children it's increased and the millions of pounds that we have gone over. And it may be that. You can't tell me about that now, but I would like to understand why we've got such a deficit in such a short period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lannigan. councillor Turner, please.
Mr Mayor, thank you very much for your comprehensive report. Craig, under 3.5, obviously, we are having to spend a significant amount of money on these residential placements. I assume yourself and the officers aren't just shrugging your shoulders and saying it's somebody else's fault, we've got to keep paying that. What are we actively doing to try and do something about reducing those costs? And that's not to say we shouldn't look after children. Are we actively looking at other options, and what are we doing within that? And my second point is under 5.3. Can I ask, it's a fantastic idea to ring-fence 10% of our apprentices in the borough, and I know recently we've just announced our 100th apprentice. Did you need to seek some type of special dispensation for that ring-fencing? Or is ring-fencing we could do for all young people across the borough? It might be more of a question to councillor Norton, because I noticed our 100th apprentice, whilst I'm chuffed he's there, is a young man from Stockton, and I'm sure there's lots of young people in Redcar and Cleveland that might have done that. So did you get special dispensation for that, or is that something we can look to extend to all of the apprenticeships in the borough? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Turner. councillor Ian Jeffrey, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can I put a plea in before I make my comment? And that is that when we get the contractor back to sort out the acoustics in this hall, which is still poor, can they also install urinals in the gents? Because that was another oversight that happened at the time the building was put up. I've got a comment I'd like to make, and I've got a question to ask. The comment is about the statistic that Craig quoted in his opening remarks, and it's the 285 children that are in the care of this local authority, an unprecedented high. You will deduce from the statistics, though Craig didn't explicitly make this point, that it is 100, in every 100 children this authority, this authority is looking after one of them. That's an absolutely appalling statistic in the 21st century in a very rich country. And you know, when Mrs May was prancing about at the Boris and Jacob Show last week, she promised us, didn't she, that she could see an end to austerity? Well, she doesn't seem to have caught up with the activities in Redcar and Cleveland, because I believe on the 28th of November next month, and Craig's alluded to this already, there will be full introduction and rollout of universal credit across the borough, which will affect many thousands of people and families. Now, some of us in this room attended a presentation in Redcar and Cleveland House last week, where there was an individual from the DWP, and it was a two-and-a-half-hour session, and it wasn't all good news, and I'll come back to an aspect of that in a moment. But we do know that where universal credit has been rolled out across the country, there's been an over 50% increase in referrals to food banks, and that's been replicated in areas closer to us. Hartlepool Council, for instance, who got the benefit of universal credit earlier than us, did an analysis of the correlation between rollouts and rise in acquisitive crime, and why there wasn't a direct causal link. Acquisitive crime continued to rise, driven by shoplifting. It's a pretty similar picture in this borough at the moment already. Shoplifting is driving acquisitive crime, and it tends to be for consumables, which is a fancy word for food, instead of nicking stuff to flog down at the pub. So I think we can anticipate to see a similar replication when that occurs here. We know that the biggest area or driver for trick children coming into care is neglect, and we know that sometimes against the background of domestic violence. Neglect is likely to increase under the circumstances that I've described. The minister, Esther McVey, not the architect, that was Ian Duncan Smith, as reportedly told the Tory Government Cabinet, that 50% of single parents and two-thirds of couples with children stand to lose two-and-a-half grand a year on the universal credit. And when the DWP person was speaking to us last week, he did confirm some families would lose out, but he couldn't quantify on what that number actually was. Some of you will know that at the last meeting of children's services scrutiny, we unanimously agreed, with the exception of the Tory councillors, we unanimously agreed to call for a halt of the introduction of universal credit into this authority. I'm not sure whether Esther's got the letter yet, or what, if anything, the reply has been. It's interesting to note that this week, no less a person than the former Prime Minister, Gordon Brown, suggested that lest this is stopped, we may well see the sort of chaos on the streets that we saw under the poll tax back under the Thatcher regime, and of course, that actually led to her downfall. So that's my comment. But my question is on paragraph 3.3, which is about a post being recruited to for unaccompanied asylum-seeking children. And to its very great credit, of course, this authority is involved in taking numbers of unaccompanied asylum-seeking children. And UNHCR suggests that something like half a million children across the world...
Could you please sum up, councillor Jeffrey?
I won't be long, a few moments, Chair. Is in this category, there are 20,000 youngsters, they think, alone in Europe, in just that one example. Alf Dobbs, who's a Labour peer, is leading the Hour Turn campaign, which is looking to bring into this country 10,000 children refugees over the next 10 years, which would be about three per authority over that period of time. And it's called the Hour Turn campaign. They've made representations to this authority. I know the leader of councillors asked for this to be given serious consideration, and I hope that happens, and I hope that Craig, when he answers, will say that will happen. And in addition to that, we've also had a request about children emanating from Niger in Africa. There's been a request for an urgent placement for up to 50 children from that particularly beleaguered country. And again, I hope this authority can respond positively to that request.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. councillor Watts, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to ask a question concerning section 8.2 on child sexual exploitation. You've mentioned county lines. I understand there was a trial of this through the country, and money was available. Did Redcar and Cleveland get any money on for this towards our deficit? Or are we jumping on the bandwagon a bit late?
Thank you, councillor Watts. councillor Higgins, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It would be very remiss of me if I didn't comment on Hillsview Academy, considering we're talking about children, looking after our children. Well, our children in the Greater Essendon area have never been looked after properly since 2006 regarding their schooling and comprehensive schools in the area. It began with the Battle of the Schools in 2006, as many councillors in this council chamber will know, with Guildrook. And it started really about a building, a PFI, not about the children. So for 13 years, we've had no proper comprehensive schooling for the children of our area. We've had families and children let down.
councillor Higgins, are you talking to the right report?
Yes, I'm referring to Hillsview on page four. I'd like to ask the cabinet member, I'm referring to children...
We're on the looked after children report.
Sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry. I'll come in next time. I'll give you a chance to answer next time.
Thank you. No, I couldn't bear it. councillor Nightingale, please.
I'd like to refer to page 17, 43. The statistics don't seem to add up. It says that 20, there were 20 children, then there were six children, who, there's a reduction in the number of looked after children whose school place was at risk. Now, there were 285 looked after children, according to the first page of the report. That's 20 is not, 20% is, sorry, 12% is not 20, is it? So what is my concern is that if it is at 12%, it's probably saying that 160 children are at risk of losing their school place who are looked after. This could really be rather serious. So perhaps councillor Hanaway could look into those statistics. And while I'm on my feet, Mr Mayor, the letter that the resource, picking up the point that was made about universal credit from councillor Jeffrey, the letter that was requested to be sent to the minister from the resources committee was actually sent, and I signed that some weeks ago. And I have to say, as far as I know, there has been no reply yet. So no undertaking has so far been received, and therefore we are likely to be experiencing, not war, but the rollout of universal credit. But perhaps councillor Hanaway could respond to those statistics. He may need to go away and have a look at them. But I think if it is 160 of the looked after children who are at risk of losing their school places, it really is a serious situation.
Thank you, councillor Nightingale. councillor Hanaway, would you like to wind up the debate?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. councillor Evans, thank you very much for your comments. I think it is important to remember, isn't it, for all members, that when a child becomes looked after, that the family court wouldn't remove a child unless, the phrase they use is repeated significant harm. And obviously, if you imagine what that means in the life of a child, repeated significant harm, it's very important that we all remember that. councillor Lannigan, you talked about the figures, and obviously, we, to some extent, we can't predict the number of looked after children we're going to have, because it's a demand-led service and it changes every week. The number of looked after children is just children come into the system and children leave. In terms of the actual figures, if you, the 3.5 figure is the in-year figure, if you look back over five years, for example, at the children's services budget, you'll see that 5.8 million extra has been put into the budget to cope with the demand, and almost all of that was spent on foster care demand. But of course, in the same period, 5.4 million has gone out of children's services in shaping our future obligations, also known as, you know, the cuts, Tory austerity. Now, that isn't, even that isn't the whole story of the budget, because there's also been, there's money for pay and national insurance contributions, and there was also rebasing of the budget when people's services became children and families, which resulted in an extra one and a quarter million going into the system. If you put all that together over five years, you get an extra 2.8 million into children's services, which is approximately eight or nine percent of the budget. And as a comparison, another local authority near us has increased its budget by 50% of their children's services budget. But in terms of it being a demand-led service, you know, we can't say now how many looked after children we're going to have in a year's time. councillor Turner. The dispensation, I think, as far as I understand it, this was an internal decision by the Employment and Skills Service, which was endorsed by the senior management team. But I will look into that and get back to you about how the decision was taken. Obviously, we want to give our looked after children and our care leavers all the opportunities and help that we can in launching themselves, you know, in the adult world. The shortage of places, this is a region-wide shortage, and the, many of these institutions have been funded by government when you go to the most serious end, for example, young people who are at risk of suicide. And that, those places are funded by the Home Office, and the funding for that has gone down 50%. So there simply aren't the places there, which is why we have a very small number of looked after young people who've gone hundreds of miles away for us to find places for them of the required security. There used to be a facility in Yewnae Cliff, but now that's much smaller than it used to be because of reductions in government funding. Below that level, in the complex needs but not at that level of security, there is, again, a shortage of places. And other, you know, different authorities do it differently. So Stockton Council, for example, uses a company called Spark of Genius, which don't run the home, their local authority residential home, but they run the service in the home. And we're looking into that at the moment. So all of the regional DCSs are looking at the general problem of shortage of placements and talking to government about that. And we in particular are looking at our own model of delivering places to young people with complex needs, and whether we can do that better, whether we could do it, for example, like Stockton does it. But of course, that presents then its own...
Can I ask you to start something up, please, councillor Hanaway?
Sorry, that presents its own, I'm going to have to write, I'll write to you on this. Yeah, okay. Ian's, councillor Jeffrey, your comments on universal credit are very valid, and another aspect of universal credit is that our residents will require sufficient digital skills to navigate the system. And so I've asked if the Employment and Skills Service can expand their current courses that they run on digital... And so I've asked if the employment and skills service can expand their current courses that they run on digital skills, which they presently run for vulnerable adults, and whether if they can expand that to actually, to be for anybody who needs them. Councillor Watts. I'm trying to read my notes, so I'll ask you afterwards what your question was, I'll write back to you on that one. Councillor Nightingale, I think you've read it slightly wrong. The, there are only six looked after children whose school places are at risk. In terms of the total and the percentage related to the total, because the number changes every week, it may have been a different week when they actually looked at the, you know, the total. But also, don't forget, we're dealing with those, that set of the looked after children who are of secondary school age. Because obviously they go from not to eighteen. So we're dealing with the subset who are in secondary school.
Thank you councillor Hanaway. Could you have a show of hands please to accept that report? Okay, thank you, that report is accepted. I to make is to receive reports from portfolio members. It's a report from, again from councillor Hanaway, the annual report on children's services. Councillor Hanaway.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. It's been a great privilege to have this role as lead member for children's services and education since 2015, as well as involving an awful lot of worrying. And it does feel unfortunate that I've had the role during years when life is becoming more difficult for an increasing number of our twenty seven thousand children and young people. I feel that children's social care often doesn't get the public profile that it deserves, except when there's a tragedy or a crisis. So I'd like to pay tribute here to our hardworking and courageous staff, particularly to their goodwill and their spirit without which we would not function at all. Few people in the country are more dedicated and less recognised for their work. And that applies to our senior staff as well as our social workers. I won't embarrass our director by going into details, but there are occasions when she has done things to safeguard children which are miles beyond her stated duties. And members should be aware of the level of commitment that we have in this authority at all levels of the work. And to do justice to all their work, I must say there's a great deal to celebrate in this report. Much service improvement work has been done following our Ofsted inspection. And the region's DCSs have organised a new system of peer review. A real sharing of their strengths and weaknesses, not just a formal exercise so they can all improve. And in parallel to this, the region's lead members meet regularly now to address the current crisis. We're very proud to have a national social worker of the year, Louise Walker, as our head of social worker professional standards. In education, this year's key stage two SATS results put our primary schools once again among the country's best. Of the fifteen highest scoring local authorities, fourteen of them are in London and the other one is us. We're at number five, which is a fantastic confirmation of all the collaboration between schools that we initiated. Our foster carer recruitment campaign has also been very successful and we continue to develop it, believing that our looked after children have the best possible home amongst our own family of foster carers. Congratulations to our health visitors, the school nurses, whose work was inspected by the Care Quality Commission and found to be so effective, there were no recommendations for improvement. We also have a new early help strategy as well. We are faced with a situation where we can no longer fund as a council the preventative work that we used to. The same as all councils are suffering that problem. But we also believe that it is good to share the responsibility for early help with other providers, with partners that meet in the children and young people's board. And that, and that we know that at the low level of intervention, when you're talking about early help, that there are many families who find it easier to work with, you know, a community worker or a community volunteer than they do with someone from the council. We've also recently seen the merger of Redcar and Cleveland College with Stockton Riverside College, and we've just had a session on that today. To ensure we continue to have a local college for local people with a wide range of courses at all levels. And also to create the skill level needed for our new industries. And we'll continue to work closely with the college on its journey. However, it must be acknowledged that the facts working against us in children's social care are stark. The children's commissioner recently reported there were two million children, one in six growing up in vulnerable families where there are serious risks in England. One point six million of them receiving no known support or help from the system. She writes, the economic and social costs are unsustainable. Along with the National Children's Bureau, the children's commissioner, Barnardo's, the NSPCC, and all the other bodies that I've listed in the report, I call on the government to take immediate action in the next spending review to support our most vulnerable children. There are far more influential people than me who are saying that we are risking in this country the kind of tragedy that we've seen in the past with Baby P, with Ellie Butler, with Daniel Pelker, or with the grooming scandals in Oxford, in Rochdale and Rotherham. I agree with the Conservative MP Tim Loughton, Chair of the All Party Parliamentary Group for Children, who wrote, it is unconscionable we're putting children's safety at risk by allowing families to fall into crisis before we step in to help. As well as this crisis in children's social care funding, we're also concerned about the education system that our schools and the academies have to struggle with. Our school leavers should have done well in their GCSEs this year because they're the first cohort in the borough whose SATS results back in primary school were greatly improved, as the collaboration between primary schools that our education service initiated started to bear fruit. But we must also acknowledge that this was by far the toughest exam year for year eleven students in the last few decades. With newly reformed subjects and much more content to learn, fifty percent more exams to take, less time to study new courses that were only approved in mid 2016, and less familiarity with courses and marking schemes in the schools. There are early indications that some of our schools have improved their results, though I'm sure we are all aware of the huge variation in the performance of secondary academies and schools across the borough. We remain also very concerned about the high number of pupil exclusions in some schools and academies, which now include children who previously did well in primary school. As the report details, we have challenged every possible educationalist and official over this issue, including the regional schools commissioner and in Westminster, the national schools commissioner. We are deeply worried about the effects these exclusions are having on the children themselves. Where are they? What education are they having at home? But also the effects on their families and the future of the borough. The new economic future that we often talk about will stall if it is beset by large scale social problems and a shortage of resilient and skilled young people. There needs to be some recognition of this reality in Westminster. The growth of the academy and free schools programme has brought a new level of complexity, particularly when a trust is given concern. Our own education department is now thirty six people. Here is the education department after the review. There are not many school improvement advisers there. The money that has been withdrawn from us now goes to companies like this, AVE. They get the money that used to be our education grant and they provide services to schools. And they are not accountable to any of us or to any of the people out there. So we, we believe that, where was my place? Even the most experienced find the academy system extremely difficult to work with in our staff. Yet nationally, we've seen trusts being forced to hand back or voluntarily handing back poorly performing schools to local authorities, which leaves them in limbo whilst a new sponsor is sought, with school leaders unable to make significant decisions. And the hiatus can take months. In such cases, the governing body should have the legal option of returning to our local authority family of schools, particularly if financial mismanagement in an academy trust has occurred. The interests of children must be at the forefront of these decisions at all times. And local authority services should be invested in to provide support which is better than the poor value for money that has been shown in some academy trusts. Finally, as ever, the best bit of my role as lead member has been meeting the many wonderful children and young people, their families and carers who never cease to amaze me with their resilience, their aspirations and their achievements. And I've also helped to strengthen our partnerships with the charities, the agencies and groups which work alongside us, including in the recently launched Children and Young People's Partnership Board and other strategic partnerships. And I wish them all good fortune and fulfillment in the future.
Thank you councillor Hanaway. Can I just remind members that this is a question and answer session? Could ask members therefore to be succinct with their questions and that they must directly relate to matters within the report. Councillor Langit, please.
Thank you councillor Hanaway. It's pretty poor reading for our secondary schools. We've had problems at Freeborough in East Cleveland, now that's an academy school. Also got problems at Gisborough, by the look of it, at Loris Jackson. Is there anything, I understand that the lady's been down in London to an education, to see the minister down there, I don't know whether you were going down with her. These are, as you said, our future. Is there anything else that this council can do in order to try and raise standards? What we've actually got in these failing schools, these children have only got four or five years in secondary education. If they're lost, they are lost and they're lost forever. And we've got to ensure and put on what pressure we need to, to make sure that we've got the educational standards within these schools to take our children forward. And I just wondered councillor Hanaway, is there anything else we can do? Can we intervene in the academy schools or are we at a loss as to where we can go with them? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Hanaway, would you, would you like to answer?
I was expecting a list. Thank you for your question councillor Lanigan. Yes, there have been problems at the schools that you detailed. Not only is there nothing more that we can do than we've been doing, you see, all we can do with academy trusts is negotiate with them. And then where we find things that we're not happy with, we can appeal to and seek to negotiate with the people in charge. So that's why we went to the regional school commissioner and then over Hillsview, we went to the national commissioner. And the situation is even worse than that. Because increasingly it seems that not only are we very limited, if they were still our schools, then there's a lot we can do. I was talking to our new, our new head of education, our interim head of education this morning. And she was describing to me, you know, the things that a local authority can do to make sure school performance improves. But not only can we not do very much about it, but also it seems increasingly that the regional schools commissioner herself can't do very much about it. It seems that she doesn't have the capacity in her team to intervene. She also doesn't have the same kind of powers that a local authority has to intervene urgently and directly in a school. So it is a very worrying situation in terms of, I mean, the regional schools commissioner has said to us that unless a school now has an inadequate Ofsted inspection, that she will not seek to make any more schools into academies. And I think that reflects the fact that they simply don't have the capacity, the infrastructure themselves to intervene. So the system is deeply worrying at the minute because obviously if the schools had been taken out of our control and there was a, a good system that worked well, you know, then although we might complain about the lack of accountability, we could at least say that there was an alternative system which worked. But we're not in that position. And there are many problems of accountability in the academy system, as we've seen in the recent cases of, you know, financial mismanagement. And the real worry is that although some of the people that I've met in the academy system, so for example, I had a meeting yesterday with the academy, the academy trust that's going to take over pathways. And the representative from this company that I met seemed herself, you know, a very effective, professional person, very knowledgeable. But of course, the real problem is that she isn't accountable to me or to any of us or to the public. And what I worry about is the kind of person that invites into a non accountable system where there is a lot of money and where that money ends up. We've seen the huge rise in salaries of people at the top of trusts. And we've seen also in some cases them employing companies which they are connected with to do the work in schools. So I wish I could, I wish I could give you a more positive answer on that councillor Lanigan, but it is really a very worrying situation.
Councillor Higgins, please.
Thank you, got it right this time, thank you very much, madam mayor. Councillor Lanigan's like preempted my questions really, and it's mainly about Hillsview on page four. So basically, I'd like to ask the cabinet member, we can't do anything, we, our hands are tied. From two thousand and six, we've been on a rollercoaster in the Greater Essendon area with the senior school education. We've had thirteen years of all these children falling through the net, not supported, no life chances. So what do we do as a council? We can't do anything. So who can do something? There must be somebody that can do something for this because this card's happening in the Greater Essendon area. It's one of the most deprived areas with children and they need this support, they need these role models. And these, these good starts in life and the good start is their education. So it's very distressing to hear you say that nobody can do anything. Thank you.
Councillor Higgins, councillor Hanaway?
Thank you councillor Higgins. When we met the national commissioner, well, the first, the first difficulty was meeting him. Because he didn't want me in his meeting particularly, and he didn't want the mayor of Middlesbrough either, because it was a joint meeting about Hillsview and UCA. And he looked at me and said, look, political engagement is not essential. You know, which was, which felt quite ironic at the time because obviously we in the council were doing a lot of work on the abandoned part of the site, the Eston Park School site, which at that stage, you know, had been, the fire had already happened. And so we were working hard to make sure, you know, that there were no injuries or deaths upon that site. So to have the national commissioner say that political engagement was not essential, you know, was, was really galling because, you know, while he was working on who was running the school, we were working on trying to make sure it was safe. So yes, it is, it is, there are deep problems there. There's been a better monitoring, monitoring visit from Ofsted, which shows that they were, they're addressing, you know, at least the safeguarding issues and some of those. But equally, the academy chain has been moving resources out of the school at a time of crisis. Which obviously reminds us of the fact that these trusts are businesses. So we, you know, we have done everything we possibly can. It took a long time to meet the regional schools commissioner, it took a long time to meet the national schools commissioner. He has come up here and chaired several meetings. But we are hoping that there will be a better future at the school. Unfortunately, I'm, I'm limited as to what I can say about that, you know, in public. But we're hoping that soon there will be a better future and a better education for those children.
Councillor Hanaway, councillor Watts, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Don't know where to start. I have criticised councillor Hanaway in the past for being good news, good news. And yet again in this yearly report, there's the great deal to celebrate. Well, being over three and a half million in deficit, when you set your budget in April, and it's only, well, September when there's an A, it's certainly not something to celebrate. We're told that it's the cost of out of. We're told that it's the cost of out-of-house placements. But, keep losing me place. What it says in this yearly report is that two years ago, only 45% of children's placements were in-house. Remaining 55% were independent fostering. This year, the service has been able to report that 61% of children who are fostered live with an in-house house carer compared to 39%. So that should be a large saving for the department. I did ask you over 12 months ago, that it appeared then that the cost of spending was going up and up and up by your department. And I asked if in each of your reports, you'd put some indication of money-saving things that had been achieved? You know, rather than the good news, a bit of practical work. It never happened. Now, I see in here that you referred again to the four-week Ofsted inspection over a year ago. Now, at every meeting in the last year, again, I've asked you for an action plan, which I thought would have been done at the beginning. The last I heard, you told me it was in this cabinet paper that led to this report. Well, it doesn't, it just says the outcome led to a development of a comprehensive programme of improvements. We are corporate parents, we have a right to know what is going on. And for someone to be so much in debt in such a small period, I think we're owed an explanation. The point you missed last time was not lengthy, it was brief.
Could you sum up please councillor Watts?
Well, seeing as I didn't get my point answered, can I just repeat it?
Yeah, if you put your question please, we're over time.
It was county lines. That when it was the trial and money was given out to certain key areas of the country as part of this trial. And I asked whether we got some of that money, as we certainly needed, or have we just on the bandwagon too late?
Councillor Watts, councillor Hanaway.
Thank you councillor Watts, we are indeed all corporate parents. So if we had all the looked-after children lined up here, which one would you like to point out and say we've spent too much money on? Would you like to choose some? I don't think anybody could say that my report was lots of good news. You don't seem to want to acknowledge the fact that this is a national crisis. So if we have the National Children's Bureau, which produced a report saying no good options. Number one, children's social care system is struggling to meet demand. Resources being directed towards children who have already suffered abuse and away from early intervention. Local authorities are struggling to keep up with demand from rising numbers of children and families needing support. It is a national crisis, it's not something I've made up. So you talk about, what else do you talk about in here? Yeah, so it's not good news, it is a national crisis. The cost of placements over five years, when the foster care placement has gone up from six million to 11 million. So, you know, which one should we not spend the money on? You know, we can't, we have a statutory duty to these children. And you know that already, that we have a statutory duty to these children. You know, we can't pick and choose which ones we find placements for. The 3.2 million that you mentioned isn't of course 3.2 million now. You know, which if you read the corporate forecast, you would know. But I've also given the picture to councillor Lammingham over the past five years. You know, there's 5.8 million gone in and all of that went on placements. 5.4 million come out to meet our shaping our future obligations, which over five years means an increase of 2.8. All of these are corporate figures. Another problem is obviously, I can't bring you lists of expenditure from the department. We can't have different departments producing their own figures in public. You know, these are corporate figures, it has to be done that way. Which is why the financial information is in the financial reports. County lines, your county lines questions, I don't know. But I will ask that and get back to you about that one.
Councillor Hanaway, councillor Evans, please.
Thank you. Just a brief question about our school nurse service has done very well with the health statistics. That joint service has been a great success. With the new requirement of, which will be coming in shortly, about assessing young people's mental health within school, that school nurses look to physical health. I was wondering if we'd had any conversations or any thoughts about how schools would be prepared to take on this extra task? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Evans, councillor Hanaway.
Yes, that mental health is an increasing issue in our schools. And the last Public Health Report that we had said that one child in 10 has a mental health issue, which is obviously a huge figure. And as you rightly say, the schools will now have to procure those services for themselves, which brings us back to AVEC. So we don't have the control of that anymore. But I do know that they do take it seriously. The head teachers do take the issue increasingly seriously. Because it's unignorable, it's an epidemic really. And so it is often the subject of debate. I believe it's been debated in the school forum and in other places too. So, but I think in terms of actual provision of services, they'll be doing that themselves.
Councillor Hanaway, deputy mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I seem to have spent this afternoon agreeing with councillor Ian Jeffrey about things. Well, and this is on the subject of acoustics, just give me a second, Mr Mayor. I cannot hear what people at the back of this hall are saying. So how can we possibly run a meeting efficiently? When councillor Mrs Higgins was speaking on the wrong subject, I didn't even realise because I couldn't hear what she was saying. You know, it's essential and urgent that something is done to improve acoustics in this place. On the subject of Craig's report, in particular on the subject of academies, I would just like to advertise the fact, you have been told by email that through scrutiny, we're about to set up a task and finish panel to look at the goods and bads in our secondary sector. And I'm sure we'll be looking at this question of academies versus the maintained sector. So if you are interested in that, please sign up to it. You don't have to be on my committee, anybody on the council is welcome to come along. So I don't quite know what my question is. Would councillor Hanaway agree with me that it would be a good idea to sign up to the task and finish panel?
Councillor Hanaway.
Thank you, yes councillor, deputy mayor. I would very much agree that it's a good idea to sign up for the task and finish group. And I heard this morning citing news that the Regional Schools Commissioner has agreed to engage with our task and finish group. Although our new head of education is not sure what that means she will come herself or whether she will delegate that to somebody else. But I thought I'd give you the news.
Thank you councillor Hanaway. Councillor Lyn Knightingill, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Hanaway was basically saying that there is some problem with academies. It was the main theme of what he was saying. And I'm not willing to defend the universal academisation. I'm certainly not willing to defend the worst government that we've had in my lifetime. But I think we do need more information about what is going on in the state of our schools in this borough. Paraphrasing what councillor Hanaway said, I'll come to the question, Mr Mayor, in a moment. Paraphrasing what he said, basically was saying that our primary schools are doing well, secondary schools have got problems. So I think it might be an idea, and I didn't realise there was going to be a task and finish group, but it might be an idea for the task and finish group and for members of this council, if councillor Hanaway would provide us with the statistics about the schooling that we have in the borough, so that it shows the performance of schools, secondary and primary, along with what their nature is. In other words, whether they're academy, foundation school, maintained school, et cetera. So that we can actually be able to form a judgement on academisation in this borough. Most of the things that councillor Hanaway was talking about seem to be problems outside the borough. If there are problems inside this borough, I think we should know about it as well. The information that I'm asking for from councillor Hanaway may only be a partial judgement. But it would be useful for us to be able to see what is really happening in the schools. Because I think it's universal, isn't it? That we would all want the schools to be performing well. My own feeling is that one of the problems in the schools is that it's the curriculum. And I don't believe that one national curriculum fits all. But I do hope he will provide us with the information that I've requested so that we can be able to make a judgement. And he will circulate that to members of the council.
Councillor Knighting, councillor Hanaway.
Yes, that's fine, I'll circulate the information as it comes in. In the past, of course, when the GCSE results, when the exams had been taken and after August, the results would come out and then they would go into a report. But it's by no means as simple as that now. Because the schools are judged on a different kind of measure called a progress measure. And it takes them a while centrally to actually produce the figures. So where it used to be, the beginning of September, you could compare the different performance of secondary schools. Now it's late October. So as those come in, then I'll certainly pass them on.
I'm not just talking about GCSE results or SATS results. I'm talking also about the inspections that have been made by Ofsted as well. So that we can get a clearer picture of what is actually happening.
The schools. Yes, the system has just changed recently. But there is a figure in the report that says that almost all of our primary pupils, I think 97.7%, are in a school that's judged good or better by Ofsted. But only half of the secondary pupils are in a school that's judged good or outstanding by Ofsted. And that really is a stark indication of, I think, the difference between the two. And this is something really the academy and school secretary heads need to address. And in particular, I'd recommend that they talk to the primary heads, you know, about the children who are coming through and how they can make a better environment for those who struggle in key stage three. Because many pupils get lost in key stage three at secondary school. And that's, I think, one of the urgent issues that needs to be addressed. Of course, it all depends with education what perspective you're coming from. Because you changed slightly in what you were saying onto the curriculum. And I'd agree with you, and of course, that's the broader view of education. And it does often feel that in general, it's taken a very wrong turn. So for example, if we talk about Outward Academy, for example, which has outstanding, and again this year, you know, their results have gone up again, their exam results. Because if you look at the Bidale School as was, they had 10 football teams and cricket teams. Now, where are they now? Now, to some extent, that particular head teacher, because, you know, he's a very good head teacher, so he compensates for that by having a rich, you know, after-school enrichment programme. But that doesn't happen in every school. And so I think that you're right, the narrowing of the curriculum and taking their eye off the whole child. And having very much a one-size, not only a one-size-fits-all curriculum, but a one-size-fits-all discipline system, which doesn't take enough counts of the variations between children and special needs that some children have. You know, I'm still shocked by the Ofsted send inspection report that said half of the children excluded.
Can you sum up please councillor Hanaway?
I still think that's a really shocking figure. And that's something I think they need to address by looking more at the whole child again.
Thank you, councillor Mason, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Hanaway for four years of very comprehensive reports. Councillor Hanaway will no doubt expect me to put a plug in for Tuned In, as I always do at his reports. And I'm very glad to see him mentioning it. But I would just like to add that for any members that don't know, there is also a very good programme of events happening there for grown-ups too. So if you have an interest in country music or classical music or comedy, then do check out Tuned In's Facebook page and get along to some of their events and support our youth services more generally. The question that I would like to ask councillor Hanaway is, what is he doing and what are we doing collectively? And what more could we be doing, both individually and collectively, to make the case to the government that children's services here in Redcar in Cleveland and nationally are most certainly on the verge of crisis? There will be a day soon, I'm sure, where our children's services department can only provide statutory services, where our non-statutory services, which we largely expect to be propped up by the third and voluntary sectors, are no longer able to provide our youth services and those other ancillary services that people expect of children's services. And indeed, this is a problem not just caused by the inexorable rise of the number of children in services. I think it's gone up something like 100 in the time that I've been a councillor over the past seven years. And of course, the budget for children's services in that time has gone inexorably down. So what is he doing and what can we all do to make the case to government that we are on the verge of a crisis and that we actually need to be funded based on our need, not based on a figure that comes out of a minister's head?
Councillor Mason, councillor Hanaway.
Thank you, and thank you for what you said about Tuned In. That's been quite a long road for us, hasn't it, at Tuned In? To develop it into the much better place that it is now. And thank you for what you've said about what's available for grown-ups too. Yeah, in terms of children's services, it is a real struggle. And what do you say about what more we could do? Well, they cannot possibly not know. You know, if you have a chair of the parliamentary group who is in the governing party and says this is unconscionable. You know, if you have all of the organisations that I mention in the report, I mean, a huge list of them, all saying that something needs to be done now, that it's absolutely urgent and that in the next spending review, there must be more for children's services. You know, there is an alternative argument put by some people that the money is there, but it's being spent in the wrong places. Now, I don't think there is enough money. But even with that view, there still needs to be a change. And the Institute for Fiscal Studies says that total spending on children has gone down 12%. And, you know, they say this is extraordinary. You know, that all of the gains made in the previous 20, 30 years have now mostly gone. I think anything would be welcome. Any intervention, any letters that members want to write, any influence that any members may have. I know our senior staff here make the case all the time, our leader makes the case all the time. All of the meetings and bodies that... of the, the meetings and bodies that they go to, the local government association is saying the same thing, the local government association decided to go and get some very hard data, because they thought, we're not getting anywhere, so we'll get some very hard data. So they commissioned a data company to look through children's services spending in what they call the middling councils, so they didn't go for huge cities, and they didn't go for very rural places, they went for your average typical middling-sized council, and they looked at the variations in spending on children's services, and they concluded that thirty-one per cent of those variations in spending were caused by deprivation. So there it is, you know, it's in hard numbers, the deprivations and, and all of the social factors that proceed from it, the toxic, what they call the toxic trio, horrible expression, you know, but social abuse, mental health, back to mental health we were talking about, the, the massive increase in child neglect, it's, it's as plain as the nose on your face, you know, they can't not see it, they're doing an ostrich act, that's the problem.
Councillor Hanaway, now move on to item nine, the report on the senior management structure, councillor Sue Jeffrey, please, sorry.
I thought we approved the reports, but obviously we don't, okay, we've only been here a few years, fair enough. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is the report on the senior management structure, it's fairly straightforward, it's basically asking you to confirm that the existing post of Director of Economic Growth be re-designated as Corporate Director for Growth, Enterprise and Environment, and that it be remunerated accordingly in line with the other corporate director posts at a director one level salary, that will be at an additional cost of thirty thousand pounds or thereabouts per year. This is here with us for us to approve, because these posts have to come to full council. I would just say that although this is a post of Director for Economic Growth, Enterprise and Environment, of course our success in all those areas are hugely important when it comes to how we generate income going forward to fund the services that Craig has been talking about, so all of this is very much interlinked and an absolutely essential post, and I hope that we can confirm our support. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey, I have no one wishing to speak, so can we put that, sorry, can we have the report seconded, please?
Yeah, second the report, Mr Mayor, reserve the right to speak.
Sorry, councillor Watts, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I, I read this and it makes sense, but when are we going to get a proper list of officers, senior management with contact details? People disappear, we're not even told who's going or when's going, we have a relationship with senior officers, on behalf of our residents, we do work with them, stop laughing, and when they disappear, we're left, it then takes a while to find out who's covering that, we then have to put them in the picture of where we've been. So I would ask that now people, appointments have been made, we get a list of contact details of senior managers as soon as possible.
Councillor Clark, please.
Amy, Mr Mayor, councillor Kay, yeah, thank you very much. No, it's just on the, the process, paragraphs two point seven and four point one, where it says group leaders have been involved, albeit I'm a group leader of one, nobody's spoken to me about this before, neither have with councillor Higgins as well. Now, come on, let's play fair, let's speak to these people, because I'm here as an elected representative, and it's only fair. Now, we know austerity's finished, because the Dancing Queen told us a couple of weeks ago, didn't she? So I'm assuming there's money in the budget for what we're going to vote for today, I can't say I'm entirely happy with it, but it'll balance everything up and the structure, so just remind you that we are here, and you can hear us as well, so please make sure that we are involved in all future processes, thank you.
Councillor Clark, councillor Lanigan, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I do realise the importance of this post, and I think that if Regent Cleveland are going forward, then we do need a director of some substance to do that. I actually felt that Mark Liedeman was an extremely excellent officer for this authority, and was extremely sorry to see him go, he worked alongside members and did everything that he possibly could to help. I've looked at this, this directorship, it is covering a massive area, and so it is imperative that we get the right person to fight our corner down at the Tees Valley, and for Regent Cleveland itself. I've looked at Hartlepool and Middlesbrough and Stockton, and they seem to be forging ahead and doing all sorts of other innovations and bringing jobs and creation and all sorts, and Regent Cleveland at the moment, we seem to be in some sort of lull, and although the rest of our offices are exceptional, and I thank them for that, because they all work extremely hard, I really don't think we have a choice but to go for this today, because Regent Cleveland badly need a directorship of some calibre. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lanigan, deputy mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This, this is a, what councillor Watts has said is something that's sort of worried and niggled me for some time, and I agree with her, about people just disappearing from the face of the earth, we're not supposed to even mention their names anymore, I'm going to, Simon Dale, Gerry Bruff, and now Mark Liedeman. These people, it's as if they've been sent to the Gulag Archipelago, they didn't, they never actually existed, they've been expunged from history, and, you know, I think this is wrong, for whatever reason they went, it, they didn't even get a send-off, they were here today, gone tomorrow, and that just isn't good enough, and, and it's time, I'm speaking to Sue Jeffrey here, that members got a grip on hiring and firing on this council, we should have a say in it, and we should be told what's going on, we're not told anything at all, we kept in the dark, we hire hundreds and hundreds of people, and yet, we are the bosses, remember, I know they tried to prevent us being the bosses, but theoretically, the councillors are the bosses, and we should be running the show. I once interviewed thirty-five bin men, I gave them ten minutes each, you know, I'm not saying we should go back to that manuteness behaviour, but I do think when it comes to important people in the management structure, we should be getting a say, and we should be properly informed about what's going on. I know that it's, it's difficult sometimes, but we, we should be trusted, we should be told in confidence, we are the people supposedly in charge, theoretically in charge, and we get to know nothing. All this delegation to senior officers should end, and we should get down to brass tacks when we're either hiring somebody, or firing, or making redundant, we should be there, we should know more about it, and, and it, I, I'm disgusted about some of the things. Simon Dale served this authority for countless years, and then he just disappeared, I was the only person, it was reported in the Gazette, who had a good word to say about him, it's wrong.
Thank you councillor Ian Jeffrey, please.
Well, I wasn't going to speak on this report until councillor Watts opened her mouth, Chair, I mean, I've got no, no issues with the report itself, but I do have issues with what councillor Watts and councillor Kay have just said, and that's the disrespect, I think, that they're shown to loyal public sector workers, and you had a claim earlier on from councillor Hanaway about how hard-working the offices of this authority are within not only its own portfolio, but across the, across the authority itself, and to bring in issues about management structures, as if it's the most important burning issue to members of your ward, your community, I'm sure isn't the case and isn't necessary, and I, you know, I hope you get your list of people, I mean, that's got to be said, that's not impossible, but I would remind councillor Watts, and our financial whizker there will correct me if I'm wrong, we've had to cut seventy-five million off our budgets since two thousand and ten, I believe there's another twenty-five to go before the end of the decade, in the course of which people haven't disappeared, people have lost their jobs over that period of time, as far as this authority is concerned, it's well over a thousand, and I'm prepared to bet that there isn't a member of this, this council that when they ask their constituents about the services they receive, my experience is they're expecting more out of the local authority, their expectations now is higher than it's ever been, with a declining resource to actually deliver it, and when I try to explain to some of my constituents what the issues are, obviously without being overtly political, to some extent their eyes glaze over, they want to know what we're doing about their individual grievances and their individual problems, and you know, I think stress plays a large part in this as far as local authority and public sector workers are concerned, because when we cried foul about the steelworks over two thousand jobs two years ago, and quite rightly, at that particular point in time, hundreds of thousands of public sector workers across the country had lost their jobs, where was the public outcry about that? We all know we need more public sector workers to deliver services, and we all know as well, and I think this is a point that Craig highlighted, they need to be accountable to their elected representatives, we're told consistently, aren't we, particularly by this government, that private is good, public is bad, well, look at some of the services, I've just scribbled a few down, look at some of the services that have been hived off to the private sector, prisons, probation, health, corporate services, corillion, that, that would be, the railways, the public themselves recognise now, I think, there needs to be a higher degree of public accountability in public services, not hiving them off to the private sector so their mates can actually make profits, and one particular service that I'm particularly concerned about, for instance, is the asylum services in this country, it's an absolute mess, don't take my word for it, the Home Fair Select Committee recently slated private organisations like G4S, which deliver services to asylum seekers in this area, about the appalling standard of the homes and the conditions they are for people like that, that's the private sector for you, profit comes first, the public code comes second, I hope you get your list.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey, councillor Sue Jeffrey, oh, sorry councillor Mason has just put his light on.
Gosh, you almost all missed out there. I think this, this issue is much more, much less about the human resources issues of the past, and much more about securing the, securing and safeguarding the prosperity of the residents of our borough. It's important to acknowledge, I think, that this isn't really the creation of a new post, it's actually the resurrection of an old post, which, as a saving measure, we, we reduced a few years ago, and have now rightly, in my view, decided to reinstate with the level of seniority and the gravitas that this borough needs in order to safeguard its future in a post-European, European Union economy, which frankly, at the moment, is a completely unknown quantity, so I will be asking my group to support this recommendation.
Thank you councillor Mason, no councillor Sophie.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, and thanks councillor Mason, I think that was probably the most sensible comment, David, you were right, yes, I think he is. Okay, councillor Kay, I have to ask you a question, have you been a councillor for too long, do you think? I've, I've, I was a councillor in the late nineteen eighties, and at that time I was asked, one of the, one of the things, first things I was asked to do as councillor was, I sat on a committee, and I was asked how many cabbage plants a resident should receive as compensation when their allotment was damaged. I think as councillors we moved on a bit from that now, we don't get into that sort of detail, and, and I think, and I think, I think what you're talking about is a time long since gone, and I really do think you need to catch up with where we are in local government now, it's no longer a situation where members tell officers what to do, it's not a master-servant relationship, it's a partnership where we work together, using our skills and attributes to be able to deliver the best we can for the people of the borough, and it's not about what I have had and what I haven't had, it's how we can deliver that partnership, and that's, that's the way we should be working, and I do have to say, you know, every single one of the leaders was consulted about this proposal over the summer, it says that in the report, I'm very sorry if you're not one of the leaders, but, you know, I'm sure your leader would have kept you informed about what was going on, and, you know, the leaders of this council, all of them, because I am a minority administration, we do lead a minority administration, we do operate by consensus a lot of the time, that's the way we have to work, and that's why Amanda ensures that everybody is kept, the leaders are kept as well briefed as possible. In saying that, I apologise to both the independent councillors in this instance, I do know that you weren't involved, I do apologise for that, you should have been informed, so I, you know, please accept my apologies on that, we do try and ensure that you are kept up to speed on everything, and we certainly have done in other areas. In relation to contact details, you know, I despair, there was an email went out once this, when this arrangement was put in place, that said exactly where the departmental responsibilities were going to sit and who was leading on them, every single councillor in this council chamber got a copy of that email, and I'm sure if you all go back and look, you will find it, and sometimes I think you don't look, or we don't look enough at what we're given, because that information was provided. Councillor Lanigan, a lull, you know, again, there is no lull, we have just, in March, twentieth of March, twenty eighteen, we published our area growth plans, ninety-nine projects all over the Gazette, quite clearly laid out, a million pounds for five centres across the borough, investment way beyond that, numbers of jobs created, I haven't got the figures in front of me, if I'd known you were going to ask the question, I would have had additional private sector investment coming in as a result, we've got all the investment we've got, because we secured the devolution deal, and we now work through the Tees Valley Development Corporation and the Tees Valley Combined Authority, the Tees Valley Combined Authority has a total single pot budget of something like five hundred million pounds over the period of five years of the devolution deal, you know, that's the sort of work that we have done to get investment into this borough, and we are seeing significant results of that, not least of which are investments by MGT, Sirius, Peak Resources are coming, you know, the list goes on, and we've also done the work that we are doing, as I say, on, on the growth plans, so we are certainly not in a lull. What we need, what we need is resources to be able to ensure that we keep the momentum going, and that is what this post is about, and I have to say, I certainly have not airbrushed out of history all the previous post holders, I am very grateful to all the previous post holders for all the work and contribution that they have made, but we are, where we are now, we need to ensure this post is resourced properly, we need to ensure we get appropriate resources into the borough through an active growth agenda, that's what we're trying to do, and I hope that everybody will, will support the, the recommendations. Just in terms of an update, in anticipation that you are going to support the recommendations, it does wrench on that the recruitment campaign has commenced, I do have to say that the, that the closing date for the post has now passed, and we have had a good field of applicants, and we're hoping that the interviews will take place towards the end of October, and again, it will be a member panel that does that appointment, thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Could I ask for a show of hands, please, on the recommendations in section nine of this report, all those in favour? Thank you, that is carried. Item ten is to consider motions, we have seen a motion from councillor Turner, can I have a second for that motion, please? Yeah, councillor Turner, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, my motion today is to set out item ten, I don't propose to reread it, back in twenty fifteen... Back in 2015, when many of us in this chamber were elected to this council, antisemitism was rarely talked about, and even more rarely seen or heard. The fact that it's existed around the world for hundreds of years probably passed most of us by, and only, excuse me, only post-World War II historians could talk about why or how Israel was established in what was traditionally Palestine, and why that became the focus of so much anger and hate. Since then, however, and more specifically through 2017 and 2018, it's become an almost daily discussion point. It's a fact that's there for all to see on the national political stage, resignations, accusations, and cover-ups and denials. Even the Foreign Secretary just two weeks ago said if we want to root out fascism and hatred from our world and from our country, then we must start by rooting it out in our own party. Locally, when a similar motion to this one was proposed by our counterparts on Newcastle City Council, that to be evacuated from the council chamber. Far-left Corbynite momentum supporters stormed the chamber and assaulted a security staff. Fortunately, nobody was hurt, and common sense prevailed with that motion being passed, as it has been in the council chambers up and down this country. Here in Redcar in Cleveland, I genuinely believe that the vast majority condemn this growing trend, and I am confident that all in this chamber will publicly back this motion that's put before you, which allows the wider public to know that this is truly the case, as for your support in this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Turner. Councillor Dick, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm sure I speak for everyone in this chamber when I say that antisemitism is behaviour which we view as unacceptable within this borough, be it within our communities or this authority as an employer and a provider of services. But there is a difficulty, which is in the UK, we do not have a legal definition of antisemitism. Therefore, it's been necessary in 2015, in Budapest, a plenary was called, and the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance established a definition of antisemitism as a working definition, a living definition, if you will, that may change over time, it's not laid down and ossified in statute. And this definition has started to become accepted and used by numbers of authorities, nation-states, and international agencies in the absence of any national or international legal definition. So, today we have a motion, and I think we need to be clear, this motion is not about antisemitism. This motion is about a policy in this authority regarding equality and diversity. So we have a policy that was in our Cabinet workbook, which I had the misfortune to have to carry with me today in case I needed to refer to it, which has been through our scrutiny process and through our Cabinet. And for the first time, we now have, in draft at least, a policy which details this authority's stance on antisemitism, and it's able to do so in reference to the IHRA's definition. So I think it's worth discussing or mentioning what the motion is referring to, the policy. It's on page 83 of the Cabinet workbook, which I have with me, so I'll quote it to save everyone looking. It says, "The council adopts the Holocaust Memorial Remembrance Alliance definition of antisemitism as set out in the alliance website." Full stop. That is the statement. This motion indicates that that is somehow vague or insufficient. I would say that it's a clear and unambiguous statement of this borough's opposition to antisemitism. But is that the right approach? That's what we're being asked to decide today. I would say it is. Most interactions with our policies are going to be done electronically. People are not going to be coming to the community heart to try and get a paper copy of our equality and diversity policy, they're going to go online and look at it. That means they will bring up the document, it will have a link, you will click on it, and you will get from the source the detail on the IHRA website, their statements, their guidance notes, explanations of how they were achieved. But in addition to that, you will also get other information that they have, that can be useful to organisations or individuals, that explains exactly what and why they're about, and how they've got to this working, living definition. It's up to date. If we put something down in a policy, if we copy and paste a huge tranche of text, that won't be up to date, that will not be the current guidance from this organisation. So I think the approach that our officers have suggested and that has been approved by our committees is the right one. People are used to accessing things in electronic formats today, they want the up-to-date information, and most importantly, they want it from the authoritative source. We are not the authority on antisemitism. The IHRA are a much better place to do that. In exactly the same way, if you look at our employment rights, we direct people to the AICAS website, we don't copy, paste, and print out the AICAS codes of conduct. I think the approach that we've set out in policy is the right one, because it effectively details how antisemitism should be defined from a good authority. I suggest we follow it, just like we followed what the government have said. If you want to consult the government's response to the parliamentary committee that considered this, they refer to the IHRA, they don't copy and paste them. In summary, I will not be voting for this motion, this technical motion about a policy. However, I do thoroughly and publicly state my opposition to antisemitism. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dick. Deputy Mayor, please.
Yes, well, I agree with councillor Turner a lot, but not on this particular matter, I'm not sorry to say. I think I agree with Labour's position, which I'm assuming is what councillor Dick is propounding. I think the Labour Party has been badly judged in the press and the media over this issue. None of the Labour members I know, not one of them I believe is antisemitic. The Labour Party believes in the brotherhood of man and socialism, so how can, it would go against their ideology to be antisemitic. Personally, I think that the, your original definition by the NEC was adequate, and I think you've rather been brow-beaten into accepting this international definition. I think the whole, the whole problem is that people confuse Judaism with the State of Israel, and I don't think, I think the State of Israel should be treated like any other state, and if you happen to agree with, disagree with their policies or what they're doing, you're quite entitled to have a go at them. And I feel that perhaps this is giving them a little bit more protection than other states enjoy. And you, I'm a supporter of the Israeli state, but I don't think they should be put on a pedestal and pilloried with the excuse of, and pilloried for not doing what you would expect a normal state to do. And so let's, let's accept the Israeli, the Israeli state, but let's not be antisemitic about the people who live there or live elsewhere in the world. And I don't think, in my opinion, the Labour Party has been badly treated and badly judged over this particular matter.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Griffiths, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I find it absolutely unbelievable, if you take the internationally renowned acceptance of IHRA, and if you take that over 50% of the councils in this country have accepted it, I find it astounding. You made the comment that officers had recommended, and I'm absolutely appalled if officers are recommending that we don't support it. The reference to Israel I find totally inappropriate, and I'll just point out for the record that in fact the borders to Israel are closed, both from Egypt and from Israel. And let me point something out here, two months' allowance of this council will take it to Israel and will take it to Gaza. I went 25 years ago, and I went 15 years ago, and to make a judgement on the situation out there without personally seeing it yourself is, to be honest, staggeringly naive. You've got to be there and see the appalling conditions on either side of the border before you can make a judgement. 15 years ago, 10 years ago, I went, and if we've got officers recommending against this, I am absolutely appalled.
Because Griffiths, councillor Walsh, please.
Yeah, I'll be very brief, very, very brief. I would just say one thing, and I need to point a correction for Steve Turner. He, in this rather mischievous motion, he mentioned issues at Newcastle City Council, where he referenced, I think, Labour Party momentum members fighting on the, crashing into the meeting and fighting on the floor. Actually, there weren't anything to do with the Labour Party, they were from a rather strange organisation called the International Workers Group. The fact that people that they assaulted were Labour members who were actually passing this resolution and definition, and I'd hope that rather than try to muddy things that happened there, he would actually be supporting those Labour councils who were victims of violence there. And as with councillor Dick, I would urge members to vote against this. I don't think it's our job to feed the social media propaganda habits of one member of this council.
Thank you councillor Walsh. Councillor Mason, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The complexity of the history of the formation of the State of Israel is something I'm not going to talk about today. Which is precisely why, which is precisely why I'm not going to discuss it. Racism is wrong. Homophobia is wrong. Ageism is wrong. Age discrimination is wrong. Islamophobia is wrong. Antisemitism is wrong. Nobody in this chamber is here to argue with any of those statements. What we are discussing today is a very trivial, very inconsequential, suggested change to an equality and diversity policy which, if this motion were accepted, could very quickly become redundant and out of date. I would therefore, Mr Mayor, like to propose an amendment to this motion. I would like to propose that we retain the first sentence of the motion, which reads, "This council welcomes the fact that the Cabinet recently approved an updated equality policy which adopts the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance's definition of antisemitism", and delete all that follows.
And you, do you have a second for that amendment?
Seconded by councillor Nightingale.
So now we need to debate amendments, and does anybody else speak on them?
Right. We had a rule that amendments had to be in writing and given to members of the council.
If you want to speak on the amendment, that's what we're going to do.
Yep. Okay, councillor Sue Jeffrey, please speak on the amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. You know, I, I was going to agree twice with councillor Mason today, because I agreed with him last time, I was going to agree again now, but, because everything you said up until that point about moving the amendment was absolutely right, we don't need to move an amendment. I just, I just don't see the point of it, to be perfectly honest. You know, for avoidance of doubt, everything you've said is right, this is a tiny issue that is about how the policy is presented in a document. It's not about antisemitism, it's not about racism, it's not about any of those other things, and I just think it's, you know, just, it's just not acceptable that we're being presented with this by a member of the council who had at least two other opportunities to amend this document, both as vice-chair of his scrutiny committee where it came, and then if he'd wanted to, by attendance at Cabinet, and he's done neither of those things. He's wanted to bring it here, the fact is, for avoidance of doubt, councillor Griffiths, for your points as well, the IHRA statement and protocols are included in full in the diversity document that we have just approved in Cabinet. There is no, nothing in there that suggests any fudge around that at all, that's what it is, and by making it a link, what it does is ensures that the most up-to-date information is available to anybody who reads that document at any time, and I would hope that everybody in this council chamber would see this motion for what it is and vote against it.
Okay, anyone else? Councillor Lyn Nightingale, please.
I did reserve the right to speak.
Is this on the amendment?
This is on the amendment, yes. The amendment is actually required, because we don't want to vote down this motion, because if we vote down this motion, we would not be welcoming the fact that we've used the proper definition of antisemitism. So I think it is important that we do, do something that is sensible, and I think it's wrong to question the motives of people for bringing forward a motion, but I think, and I'm certainly not going to make them in public, but I think this is a motion that is totally unnecessary in the context of what has happened in terms of the, in terms of the recent policy that was adopted by the Cabinet. I'll repeat, we can't vote against this motion because we would be not welcoming the new policy that has been adopted.
Councillor Dick, are you wanting to talk on the amendment?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would just like to say that I personally welcome the amendment, I accept our Liberal Democrat colleagues' wish to recognise the hard work that's been done by this Labour administration to bring this issue into focus and get it into our council policy, and therefore I would be happy to support the amendment, and I would urge my Labour colleagues to do so also.
Thank you councillor Dick. Councillor Turner, do you want to, sorry. Anyone, anyone else want to speak upon the amendment?
Yes, you get to sum up on the amendment.
Okay, no one else? Councillor Turner, would you like to sum up, please, on the amendment?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm quite intrigued by councillor Dick and the Labour Party's position that now says because it's on the internet, everybody can access it, so therefore there are no problems. I, along with every other member of this council, must have sat on scrutiny committees in this chamber, various meetings, where whenever we talk about a benefit or universal credit, everybody tells me that not everybody in the borough can access the internet. Right? So what you want to do is create a situation where if we're talking about something that bothers you and you look at social justice, people can't access the internet, but if it's something like this, everybody can access the internet, so it doesn't need to be in writing, and that doesn't work. As for saying our policy, what our policy doesn't do, what our policy doesn't do is adopt all of the definitions relating to the IHRA's definition. Right? That is what this motion does. 30 countries in the world have adopted this and the definition, the UK was the first. 130 councils have passed this through without this drama. Right? The police, the Crown Prosecution Service, UK Parliament, the judiciary, they all use this definition with all of its examples. This motion is there because our policy in that Cabinet workbook councillor Dick is waving around doesn't go far enough. Right? So you have a choice. You can make it clear and concise for everybody, regardless of whether they have, regardless of whether they have access to the internet, which is something you've all fought for at different things, or you can vote for councillor Mason's amendment, and you can brush it off and say we haven't got it. It's entirely up to you. Thank you.
I just ask the monitoring officer to clarify.
It was just on a point of clarity that the policy that's been approved does state that it adopts the definition in full.
Yep.
You, Chair, you, with the greatest of respect, you asked councillor Turner to sum up. I'm not sure he should have been summing up on the amendment. Don't we need to deal with the amendment before anybody sums up at all? So his intervention wasn't, wasn't, shouldn't have been there?
The procedure rules do allow a right of reply on the amendment for the mover of the original motion, so...
But the Chair didn't call for any additional contributions before he asked for a summing up?
He did.
That should have happened.
He did, Chair, councillor Jeffrey.
Will somebody explain how we're going to deal with it now, please?
Yes, can just clarify that we've been debating the amendment. The mayor asked if there were anybody else wants to speak on the amendment, and nobody indicated, so we asked councillor Turner to sum up on the amendment, and that is in line with procedure on debates. And now we're going to move to the vote on the amendment. So the mayor... Yeah, we're now going to, we'll provide some written guidance for all members on the rules of debate, but we are now going to move to the vote on the amendment. So in a moment, the mayor is going to ask for all those in favour of the amendment to vote.
Thank you, Chief Executive. I'm now going to ask all those in favour of the amendment, which is, I understand it from councillor Mason, was the first sentence of the motion as it appears. Is that correct? That is, so it's the first sentence finishing with definition of anti-Semitism. All those, please, in favour of the amendment? All those against, please?
Councillor Alangan, will you vote again?
Thank you, that amendment is carried. Okay. That amendment now becomes a substantive motion. Councillor Mason, do you wish to speak on it again?
Thank you. I'm trying to think what I'll say now that I haven't already said before. Except, except that this is, this is a hugely important motion. The work of the officers and the administration in drawing up this document is welcome, and I hope that members will support the substantive motion.
Anyone else want to speak before we go to the vote on the amendment, which is now the substantive motion? Okay. Right. All those in favour now of the amendment as a substantive motion, please, sure. Okay, all those against, please? Okay. Thank you. The amendment as a substantive motion is carried. We've gone to item eleven, to appoint members. We have one, one change, and that is that councillor Dennis is to replace councillor Eyre on the Health and Safety Advisory Group. All those in favour, please? Yeah, okay, thank you. Item twelve, questions to members of, members of the council. Question one, councillor Watts, please, to councillor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr Chair. During my recent health problems, which necessitated major surgery, my GP informed me that following surgery, as I had no one at home to look after me, I would have to stay in a care home at over seven hundred pound a week or part thereof. Since the closure of Gisborough Hospital, the two surgeries in Gisborough have no protocol with Redcar or Broton Hospitals, and their patients from Gisborough have no access to post-surgical beds as an aid to their recovery. As portfolio holder for adults, what do you intend to do to support the people of Gisborough in gaining parity for post-surgical services enjoyed by other residents in Redcar and Cleveland?
Councillor Walsh?
Yep, thank you very much indeed. Thanks councillor Watts, for your question, and for the chance to speak to you on this matter beforehand. Both you and I are in the position of speaking about these matters in the direct perspective of personal engagement with our health and social care system, and both of us have got the advantage, if I may use that word, of seeing both the good and the bad, and on the not-so-good side of this. The issues you should describe are real. They arise from what I can only call a running sore in the NHS side of operations, and which primarily affects people placed from discharge from an acute bed in James Cook Hospital into post-hospital, post-operative care, into beds at either Moorlands Residential Home in Gisborough, which has rehabilitation beds which we block contract for, or in other residential homes in the town which cater for people with little or no family support in the post-discharge days, who've suffered withdrawal of support from some Gisborough GPs. Now, the reason for this withdrawal of support are, with many internal matters within the NHS, very complex, very arcane, and at the bottom of a very deep well, at least to me as a labour person. At root, it's based around what is seen as a lack of support from acute hospitals' trusts in terms of what the, of the extra financial pressures that participating GPs see placed on them, and a lack of clarity, a positive information on the patient and his or her needs, and timeliness in the handover documentation from the trust and some of its consultants. This problem's been apparent for some weeks now, and I was briefed about it by the Director of Adult Services after it first arose, a briefing which made some suggestions for resolution. Following withdrawal of GP support to cover temporary intermediate care patients receiving assessment, therapy, and care in residential settings, several meetings have been held involving your officers, with the GPs, a professional representative body, the local medical committee, which is basically the GP shop stewards committee, the acute trust, and the South East CCG, to agree a potential solution that maintains what we see as three overriding essentials: patient safety, clear medical accountability, and safe practice. And I'm pleased to report that as a result of this, we've now hopefully, I'll say the word hopefully, have in place a process mechanism to approve the handover of critical medical information for the discharge of consultants at the acute trust, the GPs, and a local contract now between the clinical commission group and local GPs to recompense them for the potential additional input required for these intermediate care patients. Up to today, all requests and suggestions of GPs and the local medical committee have therefore all been met, bar one outstanding issue, which is the local GPs who have requested the discharge of consultants maintain medical cover for the first twenty-four hours post-discharge into intermediate care. Now, that task was delegated the acute trust to resolve, as after all these, after all, these consultants are at least, I'll say most of the time, their employees. But to date, the management response for following this up with the consultants has yet to deliver on this outstanding matter. I'm told by Patrick and Victoria, this has now been escalated to senior acute trust representatives for urgent resolution. I did say to Patrick in my first briefing on this matter, this should be, this could be an issue capable of being resolved by the Health and Wellbeing Board, as this body after all is supposed to be responsible for the smooth integration and delivery of health and social care in our area. In the event, I'm told, the last executive meeting of the Health and Wellbeing Board could not progress this as there was no acute trust representative present. But we do have a meeting of the Health and Wellbeing Board pencilled in for the eighteenth of October, and if this matter is still unresolved, I will give notice to acute trust. I'll be raising the issue there directly with the trust's CEO or her representative. Now, I think it's rather sad that we're having to raise matters like this to full council, but then, unlike most parts of the NHS, we are a democratic body, answerable to those electors, and who in this case are people being going through traumatic and unsettling times in their lives. At root, I assume as always, this comes down to cash, and sheer lack of resources available to the NHS locally and nationally, which we highlighted in our recent cabinet report on the state of the NHS, which I would recommend as required reading and to be kept by your bedsides. Despite the bluster and bagadocio from the government, this is a sector still squeezed dry. It isn't just flu injections this time of year...
Do you sum up, please, councillor Walsh?
Sorry. It is not just flu injections this time of year that are needed, but cash injections.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question, councillor Watts?
I'd just like to add on that, that the reason I didn't just go home and look after myself was that involved post-surgery was a five-week liquid diet that worried me more than the surgery. Now, in discussions previously with my GP, he was saying, well, don't worry, once you come out, spend a couple of nights in a care home, find out what you can do and what you can't with somebody else doing my meals, and then the post-surgical support team will look after you. Well, because I had breathing and other difficulties, my surgery was on a Wednesday, I was on oxygen for three days, and was discharged to a care home on Friday night, so there was no opportunity to speak to my doctor to fix anything up. I spent the Sunday trying to contact somebody to do something for Monday, and finally on Monday, the manager of the care home got hold of, I keep thinking rescue remedy, but it wasn't rescue remedy.
Can you put the question, please, councillor Watts?
I'm getting to the question. Rapid response team. They came and did an initial interview and said, yes, they would meet my needs and mealtimes. By the third, that was the Tuesday they started, coming three times a week, three times a day. By the Thursday, I rang them up and said...
Sorry councillor Watts, the supplementary question is limited to one minute, please.
Right. Basically, the team could not meet my needs. They were not particularly interested, interested in the fact that I'd had surgery, and they were not able to cook my meals, so did washing up, which is not their job.
Sorry councillor Watts, can you put the question, please?
I would like the reinstatement of a post-surgical support team that they used to exist and doesn't now for people like myself, rather than putting me in increased danger.
Councillor Walsh?
Yep, okay. I mean, the first question was about an issue in general terms, and I can answer that. I think the second question, with respect, is in personal terms, and I think first of all, I can't answer that because I'm not involved, and secondly, I don't think it's right or proper that we should discuss any case of any individual on the floor of a council. But what you said, and I know it's been picked up by the officers, I'll ask them to look into the matter that you raised. I think one thing for the future that might help here is that we are actually starting a new system, probably within the next two months, and this is a, basically between ourselves and again the NHS, and the CCG have revised a contract with the acute trust to enable the employment and deployment of what are known as, I love this title, community matrons, gives you an image of Patty Jakes in a big hat, but she or he, actually, there's a slip, they will be aligned with the residential intermediate care patient at South East, they will be aligned with that patient when he or she arrives in a residential setting, they will be as initial responders in any non-emergency clinical need raised by the intermediate care staff, and the community matron will be in contact daily with the staff and treat all presenting clinical issues as specified within their professional competence. And obviously, we'd hope they do the job properly, because, you know, in this time and age, people are not expected to have sham treatment in any of our hospitals or any of our units, and I would hope that this will actually ease the problems that you went through in terms of your particular issue you raised.
Please councillor Walsh?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. In terms of the issue that you raised, what I will do, as I say, is ask the officers to respond on the personal aspect.
Next question, councillor Davis, to the leader of the council, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can the leader of the council please verify, for the avoidance of any doubt, that what the decision-making process is with regards to the town centre regeneration funding?
Councillor Jeffrey?
Yep, thank you very much for the question, councillor Davis. Just, just so we're quite clear, the town centre revival funding, that's five million pounds, a million pounds each for Redcar, Eston, Saltburn, Loftus, and Gisborough. That was set out in the area growth plans, which were agreed at Cabinet on the twentieth March, which I referred to earlier. Growth plans were developed in consultation with the public, community groups, and elected members. When they were published at the time, we made it absolutely clear that the delivery of those growth plans would be in partnership with communities, so very much a co-production. So it's about communities working with council officers and other partners, businesses, the rest, to decide how that money is best spent in their areas. Inevitably, however, though, there will be schemes into which some of this cash will fit. So for example, the work that we're doing at the moment on shop fronts is a borough-wide scheme, it's not just specific to the individual areas, but I would expect to see in terms of decision-making that to be a joint matter for officers and the community together to decide what is best for their area and how money is best spent. And I think we've got many examples of best practice of that right across the borough.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey, do you have a supplementary question, councillor Davis? And it's got to be limited to one minute, please.
Yes, I have got a supplementary question, thank you, Mr Mayor, and I'll attempt to get through it quick. Thank you for your clarity, councillor Jeffrey. However, that does not appear to be the case, and I'll tell you why that is. About two weeks ago, the chief executive visited Loftus to meet the chair of Love Loftus, Tony Henderson, who had invited her up to look at the investment opportunities and problems while walking around Loftus. They went on to meet a local business owner, who I might add is the secretary of the local business group and key individual amongst most of the positive outlook in the town at this present time, who had no idea who the chief executive was, and she told the CEO of the work being done by the Steering Town Investment Group, or STIG for short, as I like to call it, to make the one million pound allocation go further following the failure of the THI funding bid early this year, and I thank councillor Bob Norton again for providing the steer, for setting up this group, which brings together all the community groups and organisations and stakeholders like businesses, residents, community groups,
Can you put the question, please, councillor Davis?
The Borough Council and officers from our CBC are all involved in the decision-making process. However, during this chance meeting of the three local business owners, discussed our ambitious plans for our long-term empty shops, starting with one small unit two doors down from where they were stood at the time. Now, following that discussion, the CEO stated that the million pounds would not cover, basically, any of the work that this STIG group are proposing. It's, it's coming. Also that she was not looking at the car parks as options, as she wanted to cost for the non-pedestrian walkways and cables to be brought out. Now, the last time I checked, the chief executive was not elected to her role.
Councillor Davis, a point of order. Councillor...
Is this a lecture, or are we going to get to the question, Mr Mayor?
Is this a lecture, or are we going to get to the question, Mr Mayor?
Councillor Davis, please, no more. Would you please put the question straight away?
The last time I checked, the chief executive was not elected to her role. We as ward councillors are accountable for our decision-making processes.
I'm sorry, councillor Davis, if you're not putting the question, I'm going to cut you.
You've got one more thing to go, just let me get it off of you.
I'm sorry, councillor Davis, I've asked for the question to be put several times, and it hasn't.
So I'm being refused to speak? Okay, thank you.
I mean, just very quickly, first and foremost, I mean, I would expect our chief executive to go and walk around areas and look at parts of our borough, and indeed, if she wasn't out and about in our borough, I would be extremely worried. That's exactly what she should be doing. In terms of the specific conversation she has, I cannot answer on her behalf, and I know you met with her just before this council meeting and had quite a long conversation with her, I don't know whether you put that to her at the time, but certainly I would have thought your questions about what she said or hasn't said should be directed directly to her, and I'm sure she would be very happy to meet with you and discuss it. But in relation to the general point you make about the importance of how we work together as community councillors and the council to actually achieve what needs to happen in areas like Loftus, I stick by what I've said before, we work together and co-produce the outcomes that are right for all of us, and no one person holds the absolute decision-making power in relation to that, that's done collectively. And if we've run into a problem here, which, you know, I hope we haven't, but if we have, we will sort it out and we'll make sure that we get what is a very active and involved community in Loftus back, working with us and on track and taking that forward. But I do urge you to have a conversation with the chief executive as quickly as possible.
Thank you, that con...
In twenty days, I'll be sleeping out eleven nights on the trot for the sanitation in East Cleveland, and it's for the service people that have got mental health and homelessness. So please think on, I'll be after your money as well, so I would love your support. Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm sorry for that.
There is no other business, so I will close the meeting.